Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 21 City Council Work Session for the city of Bella Vista.
All council members are in attendance on Zoom except Jim Wozniak, who is on vacation.
All righty, we have some new faces attending this evening, so I'll just take a minute and explain to you what a work session is. It is an opportunity for the members of council to obtain more information to help them in their decision making for those items that will be on the regular agenda, which is one week from today, as well as other discussion items. Some of them are repetitive that we have every month. It's more to let staff give updates, and then there are occasionally some topics of interest, and we have a discussion about those as well. The important thing to remember is there are no decisions made at this meeting. It is strictly informational only. So I also have the liberty to move around on the agenda, unlike the regular session, and I'm going to do that this evening because we do have some guests, and I'm sure that they would prefer to get back home to their families as opposed to going through the whole agenda and then doing the discussion items at the end. The first discussion item is bow hunting in Bella Vista. This first came to our attention on August 6 when we received a memo about it from two of the folks that are going to be speaking this evening. We then contacted State, Game &amp; Fish, and asked for their input, and we also approached Jim Maury, who owns the auto body shop up on 279, to get an opportunity, more of a feel as to just how many car accidents are there a year as a result of striking deer. So I'll start with Game &amp; Fish. We received their response on August 14. They came to us in writing from Mark Hutchins, who's the Assistant Chief Wildlife Management Division. He's a certified wildlife biologist. I won't read his letter in total, but councilors, just to refresh your memory, he said, "Game &amp; Fish agencies rely heavily on hunters to manage deer numbers, provide herd health information, excuse me, and assist in disease management." The reality is here in Arkansas and in many states, the large carnivore populations no longer exist that once played a role in keeping populations in balance. He ends it by saying, "We would voice loud support for the continued allowance of hunting in your community and in all communities in Northwest Arkansas." We then heard from Mr. Maury. He receives about 100 cars a year that he has to work on as a result of deer hits, and that usually includes anywhere from three to four of our city police cars as well. I shared this information with the two ladies that contacted us in early August. They asked if they could provide more information to council this evening, and in fairness of giving everybody an opportunity to provide more information, both ladies will be asked to address the council. As usual, they will have three minutes each, and Mr. Jertson is going to time them. So, Danine, I'd like to start with you. Are you ready to go?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can, and the floor is...
I just have one question. I'm sorry. The Game &amp; Fish, before they sent that letter, did they see my proposal, or was it just in response to a question from the mayor?
No, that was prior to receiving your comments. That was before. They haven't seen your comments.
Okay, so I'm under the assumption that everybody's read the proposal and know that I've found a resolve the issues of the deer management, correct?
Everybody should have received it, yes. It was sent out in their packet, Danine.
I'm really nervous, so I'm just going to read from something I wrote.
Sure. Okay, we'll start the timing now. Go ahead.
My name is Danine Missu. I'm a Bella Vista resident. Myself and others come before our esteemed mayor, city council, and others today to ask that you please really look at our proposal before rejecting it out of hand. Check into the options listed in the proposal and really think about the possibilities and not just rely on what people say is or is not possible. Try to see how forward-thinking and beneficial this could be for Bella Vista. Our proposal, sent out last week, is about banning all types of hunting, only in the city limits, and to adopt a proven and federally funded deer management program to control disease. Chronic wasting disease is prevalent here in Northwest Arkansas, and the population increase. These programs work hand-in-hand with all parties, federal, state, hunting clubs, landowners, and hunters. Lastly, we ask that you look to placing the First Nature Bridge Crossing in the natural state of Arkansas, which will allow our wildlife to migrate west and east and vice versa, as they have in the past when Bella Vista was still wilderness, without the imminent danger of being hit or killed by a car on interstate highways. We ask that the ban on hunting only within the city limits apply to all hunting tools, all types of traps, and the bow-and-arrow hunting. Within every city, every season, this city, we see innocent animals that are seen with arrows in their bodies, still alive, walking around that way. This year, there were two separate incidences, a fox and a raccoon. Last year, it was a fox with a trap on its foot running free in the forest. No one knows who's doing this or why, but it's heartbreaking to see these animals injured like that and know that they're suffering. Who knows how long it took for them to die? Neighbors of Bella Vista also complain that they find arrows stuck in their wooden fences or on the sides of their deck. Our neighbors have noticed a large increase in children on their streets in just the span of two years. One example, it went from two children to currently 11. She sees these children playing, running in and out of the forest area all the time. What would happen if one of them stepped on one of those traps or got struck by an arrow? Last week, I was walking in a wooded area just behind my church in my neighborhood, where children play at recess and during their after-school activities. I was only about 10 feet into the woods when I fell. Something got wrapped around my foot. One of my feet were tangled up in this black loosely-coiled wire. Once I dug all the wire up from under the leaves and branches, it looked like TV cable wire. That thing was about 40 to 50 feet long, and it had a tag on the end of it, a yellow clip and a white clip with some numbers and wording. I haven't looked into it further, but I came to the assumption that it's a hunter's sneer. There's no way to tell how long that trap sat there. They're supposed to be checked often and certainly not left around as trash. Clearly, that's not what's happening.
Okay, Danine, thank you. That's three minutes. I greatly appreciate you addressing us. I should make it clear to council, I know that Mr. Kelly, our staff attorney, has done so already, but no municipality has the ability to ban hunting. That is in the purview of State, Game &amp; Fish. Municipalities can put restrictions on the type of weapons that could be used. For example, we already have an ordinance on the books that doesn't allow discharge of firearm inside the city limits.
Or snap traps, yes, and I thought this would just be in addition to it.
Sure. Okay, thank you again, Danine.
Thank you.
Janice, are you ready?
Yes, Denise already gave part of my information. I'm the one that gave her the stats on seeing the children increase in our neighborhood. We moved here in July 9, 2018, and at that time, there were two children living and playing on our street, and as of this month, there are 11 kids, and they do love to play in those woods and ravines behind our houses. The thing that really concerns me about that is that I personally saw a hunter last February. It was a bow-and-arrow hunter, and he was dragging his deer through our pretty narrow ravine. It could very easily impact the health of the children in all our neighborhoods if we keep allowing this bow-and-arrow hunting. It just seems to be more prudent and caring to call an end to this in open areas. That's all I had to offer.
Well, that's great. Thank you very much, Janice. I was contacted by the COO of the Bella Vista Village POA, Tom Judson, and he asked if he could have his Lakes Parks and Fisheries Superintendent join us this evening. Rick, I see you. Good to see you again, and you also have three minutes, sir, and the floor is yours if you're ready.
Okay, I was asked to just state the current position the POA has in regards to bow hunting, and that is that we would like to see bow hunting continue. It's another activity that people like to participate in, and we are in the business of recreation, and we see bow hunting as a good and different avenue for recreation. With the passage of the 2020 Plan, we are currently looking into some additional layers of accountability because we only want members of the POA, residents, members, and their guests hunting on POA property. In fact, we even want to go a step further. To use our lakes, one can get a POA guest card, and that would allow someone to use the lakes without having their sponsor present, but we don't want to do this with hunting. We want the resident to be with the hunter, not necessarily sitting next to, but engaged in the same activity in the same general location at the same time. What we're looking at is having individuals register with the POA through member services. I also spoke to members of the Arkansas Game &amp; Fish, and their urban deer program is rather intriguing, and that might be something that we look into implementing sometime in the future. And that comes with kind of a sign-up policy in and of itself. It also would, I believe, would be able to give us some statistics at the end of the year on how much harvest we had, and then we can look at that over time to see if we are having an impact on the population and keeping the animals in control and preventing car accidents long term. So I would refer you to Policy 2.05 on the POA website for further information on our current policy.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Council members, do any of you need more information from our speakers this evening?
Well, this is John Flynn. I'm not sure I need more information. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I tried to do some research on this issue, and I was struggling to find... I've always been concerned about the safety with bow hunting, and, you know, more and more people living in Bella Vista. I was struggling to find cases where there were fatalities with bow hunting. And I did find in the U.S. and Canada, every year, about 75 people are killed in hunting accidents, and of course, that's virtually all from firearms. But the other statistic I found quite interesting is every year in the U.S. and Canada, 175 to 200 people are killed driving their automobile and having an accident with a deer. That surprised me that that was such a high number, and I think that's not something most people... So, point is, I'm concerned about the safety, but I think the argument for thinning the herd is very strong because, of course, there's tons of accidents between autos and deers, but I think people would be surprised to know that a couple hundred people a year are killed in those accidents. So that's a safety risk on that side also.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that fact.
Thank you. Is there anybody else interested in speaking? Steve?
Just one more point that hasn't been mentioned. I know a number of bow hunters, some of them who live in Bella Vista, who harvest deer by bow to nourish their families. It's one of the cleanest sources of protein you can find, and as a general rule, the bow hunters that I know are some of the most skilled and careful about the responsibility they have in hunting with a bow that requires a clean shot. I think it's something that's part of our tradition as a community. If there were a chronic problem that needed to be solved, I'd be interested in discussing it, but at this point, I think the gist of the proposal is not consistent with where we need to be for Bella Vista. I don't think we have any imminent risk, no more so than kids playing in the street. We're not going to ban all vehicles to protect our children, so I'm not finding anything really that compels me to get behind something that would ban bow hunting at all.
Thank you. Linda?
Yes, I think we all got emails today from a variety of people that said being able to bow hunt was integrally part of their moving to Bella Vista, and I also had an individual phone call with a gentleman who was looking to buy a land parcel within the city outside the POA, and he indicated he would not want to go through with that purchase if bow hunting were restricted, but since our attorney has advised us that we can't do that anyway, it's kind of a moot discussion, I believe.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, I would just like to say, of all the topics, you know, that's come before us since I've been on the council for the last four years, I think this one has elicited the highest response rate from, you know, people that are really highly opposed. Danine and Janice, I appreciate your concern and your position, and I'm not to say, you know, in between now and whenever the period may be, because there is not actually a proposed ordinance or resolution or anything before us right now to consider or to vote on. It's just a conversation to see if there would be any interest in doing that, you know, moving forward. But I didn't receive one other response that was in favor of, like you said, we can't ban hunting per se, but eliminating the discharge of a bow-and-arrow in Bella Vista. There are a lot of people that have a very strong opinion on this, and they certainly would like to keep that privilege and not have that taken from them. And, you know, there are a lot of benefits from managing deer population, but not just here, but across the state. And, you know, if the population grows too large, I said, there are a lot of adverse effects to deer, you know, in a form of different diseases that could emanate in a painful, slow death as well, and there's a probability, when those deer move around, that they could spread that to, you know, other portions of Arkansas. You know, not to manage, you know, they carry ticks and mites and all other kinds of things. So although I can understand your position, I do know that there are benefits on the other side as well, and like I said, I was really surprised at the response from people that very strongly support the continuation of deer hunting. And as you know, in Bella Vista, I mean, we have large parcels of land that are undeveloped and are fully forested. You know, I do understand... What are the rules? You can't bow hunt within 50 yards of a house or a trail. Is that right? Is that what it is?
Rick, can you answer that question for us?
Fifty yards, 50 feet. I get...
I think it's yards.
Surely it's yards.
Yards.
Yeah.
It's 50 yards from any trail or any amenity.
Any improvement. Any amenity, any structure, any trail, any improvement.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, and we have three and four acre lots in Bella Vista. Linda, the gentleman you referred to, I spoke to him today as well, his parcel's 13 acres, and we have parcels that are pretty large as well. So, I mean, they're really kind of fit for hunting. So, anyway, that would just be my feedback at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members?
Mayor, may I have one second to say one last thing?
Very quickly, please, Danine.
Okay, I understand all the hunters called in, and they're a big community, and they were rallying up their support. If I had known, I would have done the same, and I can do that at the public meeting coming up in the next week. I can have half the community in here fighting. I mean, it's not fair to say, oh, all these people called in, because I didn't know I needed to bring all the support verbally behind me. But please believe, there are a lot of people that do want this gone, especially those traps.
Okay, thank you. And please understand that this is not going to be on the agenda for our next meeting.
For the public?
No, it's just not going to be discussed at the next meeting.
Okay.
So you're welcome to come, but there'll be nothing to talk to because there will be no resolution ordinance or anything else on the agenda.
Okay. Can I add something?
No, Janice, I'm sorry. We have to move on, but thank you, ladies, very much for attending, and Rick, thank you for joining on behalf of the POA. You are, of course, invited to stay online if you wish. However, you might find it a bit grueling at times.
Well, the wife thanks you for getting to this first so that she can have me for the rest of the night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Councilors, I'm going to move around on the agenda. Next, I'm going to ask you to refer to Item G, which is a resolution adopting the Comprehensive Plan 2040. Joining us tonight is a very familiar face, Graham Smith from Gould Evans. Graham, good to see you again.
Thank you.
And at our last discussion about this, there was, I believe, strong consensus that after three years, it's time for us to vote on this one way or the other. And I'm not asking everybody to, once again, present your opinions. I think all of us have done that very eloquently over the last three years. We have received good input from you, some very good input earlier this year from our residents, and a lot of encouragement from our residents to move forward with this. So I would ask if you have any further information that you believe that Graham can provide, this is your opportunity to ask the question.
Can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
I can't see you. The video is not coming through, so if you can hear me in the audio part, that'll work. I guess, Graham, you've seen all of the comments that have come in from the various aldermen or councilmen. I assume mine were probably more extensive than most, and mine particularly addressed what I felt were itemized deficiencies in various parts of the report that I think are significant for future reference and future consideration by future councils, by future planning commission members, by future developers that come to the city to make them aware of some of the issues that are really challenges for the city. And I know that you have probably gone above and beyond your service to the city in doing your second draft to us, which is the one we currently are looking at, but I think it goes a long ways to improving the document that we at least have an opportunity to address. The reality is that I still feel it's deficient in many areas. Would suggest to the council that we offer to pay you some compensation to do a more further update of some of the items that are in there. I think they have substantial consequence in the future for the city, and I know that that may not be a consistent view or a shared view by a number of the councilmen and perhaps the mayor, but I do feel that they add a great deal of pertinence for future reference and guidance, actually, to future councils, planners, and developers that will be coming to the city to develop on lands that are non-POA lands because they don't have particular utilities available to them, and the city will need to step up or step forward and make an investment on their own to provide those utility services if they're going to become developable and productive in terms of sales tax returns to the city. I don't know, you've probably... Supposedly, you've seen all of the comments that I've made, and is that a thought that has any traction in terms of your modifying the final report for adoption?
Can I intervene and say something before we give an opportunity? I want to talk a little bit very quickly, just to make sure the council understands procedurally and legally what can be done here. We're talking about adopting a new master plan for the city. State law addresses this particular issue, and I want to reference Section 14-56-422. And in that section, I'm in subsection 4, the city council can obviously adopt the plan. It can also send the plan back to the planning commission, which approved it and sent it to you for further study. And so I think if there's any indication that you want further review and study, I think the way to effectuate that would be to send it back to the planning commission with some instructions to further engage our contractor, and then I think probably, obviously, there would need to be some sort of financial arrangement with the contractor for that. That's a few steps down the road, and then you could proceed with the commission to make a further recommendation to you. You obviously can also vote on the plan, vote it up or vote it down. You can do that as well, but I just want to make sure that you do understand that you do have the authority. Because the plan is technically by the planning commission, the city engaged this company to assist the city in developing it, and it came to you from the planning commission, you can send it back to planning commission for further study along the lines of what Larry was talking about. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Graham, as I understand it, the whole purpose of having a comprehensive land use plan is not necessarily to dig into the weeds and have everything laid out, because you'll never get it perfect, no matter how many, you know, times that you take a kick at it. And I can remember when we first met three years ago, it's a guide. It's something like a budget. A budget can change if things happen, the same as the comprehensive plan can change if things happen. It's more to steer our future zoning, our future ordinances, of which we certainly need a lot of change, and this is kind of the base pillar that will guide and direct us, but it isn't the be-all and end-all, and it doesn't have to be down in the weeds in order to get everything laid out. That can be part of the actual planning discussion for every rezone that you're working on. Is that not correct?
I guess, Mayor, in deference to your view...
Wait, Larry, 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 you've had your point. You asked a question of Graham. Let's have him answer, and then we can go back to you. Graham, please.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. The way we've always framed this in terms of a product for the city council, for the planning commission, and for the residents of Bella Vista is that this is really a framework for you all to make, as a community, to make decisions within. So what the process was really all about is identifying those things that were important to the residents and business owners and elected officials and appointed officials of Bella Vista, moving the city forward. And so...
And so while this, um, pays a little bit of attention to the past, it really is trying to look forward and create a set of topics, uh, themes, vision, guiding principles, uh, and design elements that you all can use to make decisions on specific rezoning cases, specific public investments, or any of those types of things, any of those changes that you want to bring to the city. And so while we're not, I, I tend to say it a little bit differently, Mayor, in terms of this is a framework for making decisions, this is not going to make all the decisions for you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Larry?
I, I guess, in, in, in response to Graham, I, I understand what he's saying. Uh, what we're trying to do with the comments that I've incorporated or, or suggest in there are to identify some of the additional challenges that relate to and, uh, will need to be addressed in the future by those developers and even by the city, perhaps, uh, in, in moving forward to implement your plan. I, I find the plan to be very interesting and I find it to be useful, but it doesn't identify other issues that are really challenges, uh, as a part of that framework. And I think calling those to the attention of, of the developers in the future, to the planning commission in the future, when they're looking at projects, uh, to future city councils, when they're considering, uh, approval of those, it highlights and identifies the deficiencies that need to be focused on or addressed or confronted, uh, if we're going to see those projects move ahead in accordance with your plan. Your plan can't be implemented without addressing many of those issues that I've highlighted.
Okay, thank you.
Ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, hey, Graham, uh, yeah, it's Doug. And so i- i- is this a typical document that you would produce? You know, if somebody approached you and hired you as their consultant to produce, you know, a comprehensive plan? Is this a typical document? Or, um, was it a lot more difficult giving, given all the different, uh, you know, situations we have in play here? You know, city, Cooper, uh, POA, ACC restrictions, um, and I know there's probably not just a typical document you produce, but did those overlays really make it more difficult? Um, and secondarily, was funding an issue as to the depth of the analysis you provided? Or is this, again, would this would have been what we would have expected to have seen?
Well, um, typical is not the word that comes to mind when I think about the Bella Vista Comprehensive Plan for the, many of the reasons that you just outlined. Those layers do make it more difficult. Um, there's a certain, um, level of control that a typical governing body has over its assets and over its liabilities, um, which is different in Bella Vista. And so those things do make it more difficult to, to put a plan together. What we've tried to do is recognize those, uh, those differences, but not, um, I don't think they, they provide the focal point for the plan itself. What we've tried to do is set kind of that forward-looking vision in terms of that there are differences and that, um, in fact, there's one whole chapter on the need for further cooperation between those entities. So, one, yes, that those do make this planning effort more difficult. I would say where we started, where we've ended up, the biggest thing that's had a, that's had an impact on the, the budget itself is just the timeline. And that was not totally, um, controlled by city staff, by us as consultants. Uh, there were a lot of different parties involved, and some of that was out of our, our hands. But we wanted, I'll, I'll say we, it was out of our hands, but we wanted to make sure that we had certain people invested in the plan, so we took that time.
And, and so again, was the funding, was funding an, an issue as to the depth of the analysis you provided? I mean, would you have gone any further if, if there was additional funding? Or, or, or is this what you would have produced?
This is what we would have produced. In fact, this, we probably, because of the original funding, we probably went a little further in terms of some of the redevelopment sites or development sites, which we went a little further than what we would do in a normal comprehensive plan. A typical, as you said, a typical kind of comprehensive plan level of detail would be the policies and strategies. Where we went further, and again, because of some of the differences in governance and the way you guys are just structured as a community, um, we felt it necessary to look at some of those areas that were ripe for redevelopment or ripe for development, um, that weren't being developed, and recognize that the structure, the challenges, and all those things, um, when we laid out a plan for the future. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to ask something of Graham? Graham, thank you for joining us this evening. We'll let you get back to your family.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Graham.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll start tackling the agenda, following the agenda with number one, which is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to add an article four dash unsafe and hazardous trees to chapter 20, nuisances to require the removal of dead or hazardous trees. Mr. Tapp?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This came about as a result of code enforcement and CDS receiving one to two complaints a month from citizens concerned about their property or their family being in harm's way of a potentially dead or diseased tree. And so when we, when we get those calls, we go out and take a look, and you talk to the neighbor or the owner, and nothing happens, the tree didn't go away. And so at that point, we don't have anything to enforce and, and ensure that the owner would get rid of the tree. And so, uh, we thought collectively that this would be a good time to come to you and see what you think and try to get an, uh, an ordinance enforced that will allow us a way to, to get rid of these dangerous trees.
Now, one of the concerns last time was, um, of the people on the panel who would decide if, if the tree should be removed, there needed to be an arborist. And I've since discovered that we do have an arborist on, on staff. Is that correct? Derek, Derek has told me that he's a certified arborist.
Okay. I didn't realize that, but I will tell you this, that, um, in the six years that I was with the city of Little Rock, I don't recall us ever having, the city had many arborists on staff. We never had to call them to get a decision on a tree. Um, you know, in the summertime, you can, you can go look at a tree and tell if it's dead or dying, limbs rotted and falling off. There are a few months in the winter in which that can be difficult sometimes, and, and we may just have to wait a couple of months to make that call, but, um, we processed many, many, many citations for dead and dying trees in the city of Little Rock while I was there.
Questions, comments?
There, Christie, uh, just by way of reminder, I, I spoke in opposition to this ordinance, uh, previously. Uh, we put it on the table, and, uh, it's back now. Uh, I appreciate Doug's experience base and, and bringing this forward for Bella Vista, but for me, I still feel like there's, there's kind of three key elements here. One is that there is a conventional means of handling these things already. Uh, without an ordinance, there is a legal protocol involved. And really, it starts with one neighbor speaking to another if that's possible. And if it's not possible, then there's, there's ways to go about it. But these protocols are widely, uh, practiced across the country. Uh, we would be going into a minority, I think, with such an ordinance. Uh, as, as I mentioned last time, I spoke to the arborist who is the head of the tree division in Little Rock. Uh, he couldn't imagine, uh, somebody trying to do this without having an arborist make the call. Uh, secondly, I spoke with, uh, the Rogers Code Enforcement, and, uh, in my discussion with him really revealed, I think, a real strong flaw in the way this is structured. Uh, the way this is structured, it says if a member of the city staff shows up and determines that a tree is dead or, or has some impending danger associated with it, that the tree would be removed immediately. And that's not the way we do things in Bella Vista. What, what has not been, uh, shared or explained in this in any way is, uh, what about, uh, a citation there? Uh, why would we cut down a tree and then hand the bill to the property owner if they've never had the opportunity to, uh, to remove the tree themselves? They may have other means, prefer to do it themselves, and, and those kinds of conversations are part of the convention, conventional protocol. So, uh, Rogers, uh, didn't ever go out and drop a tree on somebody. They might issue a citation, and then there's a process associated with that where somebody has an opportunity to respond. If they can correct the situation themselves, that's great. If it has to go forward, then it goes forward as any other ordinance violation would. So I think this one is flawed. I, I kind of disagree with the premise of it anyway. I will stand in opposition to this one.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, Linda, uh, just before, uh, Steve, if, if I may, Doug would like to respond, and then Linda, I'll ask you to speak, please.
Thanks, Steve. I don't think the city's position would be to go cut a tree immediately. I think that would be a last resort. Um, I think notice would be given, 30-day notice, uh, and then if the, you know, if the person that the notice was written to didn't comply, then a citation would be written. And then that would be handled in court, and we would let the judge decide whether or not he wanted the city to go remove a tree. But I don't think we would ever go out and just immediately cut a tree, uh, and send them a bill for that.
That's what your ordinance says. That's what the proposed ordinance says. Jason may want to comment on that.
Well, we can, we can, we can tweak that if needed.
Well, I, I'll be happy to write whatever y'all wanted to say. Uh, but if the tree is going to be removed and the city's going to recoup the expense, then we have to follow the process that we have already in the code as it relates to recouping funds for cleanups on lots, and so that does require a certain amount of notice. I think the way this is envisioned to work, the way it's written, is that, uh, Doug or his staff would find, of course, it, right now, it just says the Community Development Services Department Director or the directors designate would find a tree, more likely they'd get a call about a tree, they would go out and see it. If, if they determine that it, quote, "presents a condition which is hazardous to the safety or welfare of the community," uh, then it would be, it's to be removed and pruned. So then the notice would go to the owner and tell them they have, by ordinance, they have to immediately do this. And I would assume we would give them some reasonable amount of time to accomplish that. And then if they did not do that, we would have pursuant to, uh, our ability to recoup, given some notices, and then eventually gone through the process of the city removing it. Now, if, if a landowner did not remove, uh, the tree after being ordered to do so, they could be cited, as Doug stated, for violating this section because they, uh, they had not removed it when the ordinance required them to remove it. Uh, but the decision to remove it is up to the, is up to CDS and their CDS directors designate. And so the judge would not necessarily have to order removal. He could convict someone for violating, for not having removed it. But, um, it would be sort of a separate process for the city itself to go about removing it. We would still be able to do that. So it's a little bit of, so I, I guess you're both a little bit right, uh, but, uh, I think, practically speaking, it would work, the way it's currently written, it would work the way I've just stated for you.
Well, Jason, I asked you about that specifically previously. Uh, the words are, "it shall be pruned or removed immediately."
Right, exactly. And so immediately, they would be in violation immediately if it had not, if it was not done. So you absolutely are correct. It would not, it does not incorporate a grace period. What I'm saying is that good enforcement, I mean, we've got all kinds of codes in there that don't have a grace period, but, but I think good enforcement would say, hey, we've made this determination, you're in violation, we're going to come back in X number of days if you removed it, we're good if you haven't. I mean, that, but, but they run their department. I, that would be my recommendation. But, but, uh, Steve, to your point, you are correct. Uh, if you, if you wanted to make sure there was some grace period in there, I think it works.
Okay. I oppose it as it's written.
I think it's flawed, uh, in principle and flawed in specific details, but I'll leave it at that for now.
It may be flawed that way, but I could see where this would be useful.
Doug, 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 can you hold on? I promised Linda next crack.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda. Go ahead.
No, it's okay, Linda.
Yes, I've seen this many, many times, mostly related to my real estate business, where there is a tree that's way over on, over on top of somebody else's house. And many, many times, it's coming from a vacant lot. The people don't even know who to contact or how to contact, and sending a letter to vacant lot owners normally doesn't reply, isn't productive. And expecting a homeowner to have to hire an attorney to get a tree taken care of that might fall on their house, I think is a little inappropriate. I think it's certainly the city's right responsibility to ensure that the resident in the house can be safe from somebody else's tree falling on their house. And I agree that there should be some procedure, which is the same as, you know, notifying them, giving them X amount of days to respond, and then if they don't, then we can take certain action. That would be my suggestion also.
Okay, thank you. Doug, you're on.
No, I, I would just, I guess, say, um, I, I absolutely see where, where this is useful, right? So it's kind of like the dog licensing ordinance. It's like the accessory structure ordinance. Let's take a step back and let's work on, um, a policy, a, a, an ordinance, a law, whatever you want to call it, that's acceptable. But it's to the point of, of what Lynn, how, how she just framed it up, you know? I mean, if there's a situation out there, uh, that's, that's potentially dangerous or hazardous, uh, it, we need to have a way to mitigate that. You know, we can't just let this, uh, you know, continue to be an overriding, uh, potentially, you know, dangerous situation. So let's craft something that, that makes sense all the way around. And it would be great, you know, number one, if you always knew who to contact, but again, that's not always the case. But secondarily, it would be great if people would do the right thing. But some people just won't. So let's give people an opportunity to do the right thing, and then if they don't do it, then we need to have recourse, you know, to pursue corrective action before, you know, something bad happens to someone or a home.
Okay, thank you. Larry, any thoughts?
I'm, I'm tending to agree that, uh, there's benefit to having the ordinance because it does provide a mechanism for a property owner to have recourse in terms of a potential hazard to their property. Uh, and I understand what Jason is saying is that, while it says it's an immediate violation in this, in this ordinance, the reality is, is that it's immediate in terms of enforcement, but it doesn't mean we send a tree service out there and cut it down and send a bill to the property owner. Uh, I think it provides, uh, a mechanism for Community Development Services to react, contact the property owner by appropriate means, which is probably a certified letter, uh, letting them know of the, the difficulty or the situation, giving them a reasonable amount of time to respond and with direction of what their intended action is. And I think, uh, I don't, I don't see it quite as severely as, as Steve does. Um, I tend to agree with the, the need for it because it provides a recourse for a property owner, uh, now, uh, who is in a potential hazard situation for the city to, uh, take enforcement action to correct it.
All right, thank you. John?
Yeah, I think generally speaking, it's a good idea. Um, I get Steve's concern about, oh, maybe they should get more of a notice, more of a grace period. My experience with the whole, uh, community development system is that they don't err on the side of being too hard on people and not giving them enough time. And I'm referring to not just Doug, but prior people also. Uh, there's, there's more of a tendency to err in giving them too much time, if you ask me. I don't think, I'm saying, I don't think they're that bare-knuckled, hard on people, so.
All righty. Doug, do you want to give us a wrap-up?
Um, I think we can certainly change this... I think we can certainly change this. Steve, if you think that it's too harsh up front, but I don't think that was our intent. I think a 30-day notice with the ability to extend it 30 days if they're working on it would be reasonable. But if we get this call tomorrow, we just don't have a way to enforce it. We just, the neighbors go back and forth, we got one neighbor that's mad, typically they're both mad because we got one that's mad that the tree's going to fall on their property, we got one that's mad because we're asking them to cut it, and so then they're both mad. And so we just don't have a way to address it as of today.
I want to clarify one thing, just to make sure that it's understood, and the determination of the fact that the tree is dangerous puts an immediate responsibility on the property owner to bring it into compliance. That part is immediate. If there is a desire by the city to take action to remove a tree or trim it back or do what's going to have to be done, the law incorporates a notice procedure. That is not immediate. So it would not, as it's written now, would not be immediately allowed for the city just to go in and cut it down and charge the owner without sending notice and time for the owner to comply. But in terms of the requirement, it is immediately a violation, and the city could, would have every legal right to immediately issue a citation to that owner for a violation. So I just want to make sure, it's kind of a little both, but there is an immediate aspect of culpability for violation of the ordinance. There's time that would have to take place for the city to take action to cut the tree down and recoup those amounts. So just to try to be a little clear on it.
Okay. Doug, could you tweak this a bit more, please, listen, and bring Steve into it? If anybody else wants to get in touch with Doug, if you have further thoughts, please feel free to do so.
Certainly.
All right. Let's move on to the next ordinance. Amending Section 109-250, Pools and Spas. The Code of Ordinance. Ordinance of the City of Bela Vista to require fence enclosure around all outdoor pools, including above-ground spas and hot tubs greater than two feet in depth to restrict access by children. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Jason can help with some clarification, but currently, the City of Bela Vista has a requirement that there be an enclosure around the pool. And so I think what we're trying to do is further define whether or not that enclosure can be the pool itself, shrubs, or other objects. And so we get calls monthly from neighbors who are worried that their kids are going to walk over into their neighbor's pool, and we don't have a way to enforce that. A fence around the pool was an IRC, International Residential Code, that became state law when the State of Arkansas adopted the IRC code. Unfortunately, the 2012, is it the Fire?
What is the Fire Code?
Arkansas Fire Code redacted the section that requires that and decided that they wanted local municipalities to govern that themselves. And so that is what we're trying to do with this ordinance. And I understand that there is some reserve on the spas and hot tubs, and we can certainly alter that to say that if a hot tub has a cover on it, they don't need a fence. But this is more to addressing ground pools and above-ground pools. We still today, a couple months ago, had a case at the Board of Construction Appeals where a brand-new pool was built and the homeowner did not want to put a fence around it, and there were people next door that could walk into the pool. So that is what caused this to come before you.
Doug, since you mentioned it, and I want to make, I think you pretty much capped it off, but the current Section 109-250, it's very short, I'll read it to you. This is your current ordinance. Outdoor pools, spas, and hot tubs shall be protected by an enclosure designed to restrict access by children. If a fence is intended to serve as the required enclosure, it shall meet the requirement of the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code in addition to those that apply to a fence under this article. So right now, if you don't do anything, Belavistans are required to enclose their hot tubs, outdoor pools, and spas in such a manner that it would restrict access by children. That's what they've got to do. Doesn't have to be a fence, but it has to be some way to do it. And so when we drafted what you have before you, it's going to require a fence. And so that's, and then we also wanted to clarify the above-ground pool aspect because, I guess, and Doug can address this a little bit, I guess, because it was above-ground, that was seen as sufficient enclosure for the water to keep small children out of it. And so I think that the point was to make sure that that was not the case, so.
That's correct, and there were some discrepancies on whether or not there was a ladder on the pool. That, you know, that didn't, there's no enclosure there. If there's a ladder, there a child can climb. So if you took the ladder away, it was sufficient. If the ladder was present, it wasn't sufficient. So that makes it really hard to, you know, if a kid climbs in the pool and then the ladder gets taken away, who's at fault? There's a lot of controversy with that.
Okay, anybody have any comments? Linda?
I just had a question for Jason. If we were to enact something like this, would existing in-ground pools that are unfenced be required to comply?
I've looked at this, and I believe the way that it's written and the way we've presented it, it would require people in Belavista to come into compliance.
Okay.
In some fashion. So yes, I mean, if they've already got a fence, they're good. If they don't, then obviously they were already to have it enclosed to keep children out, but they would have to do some sort of fencing, yes.
And I had mentioned to Doug and Jason earlier that I would recommend an amendment to this using the word uncovered before spas and hot tubs.
Linda, I've got that, and I think it would be a very simple amendment. I think it would just be to insert the word uncovered.
Right.
Regularly, so it would say, outdoor pools, including above-ground spas and uncovered hot tubs greater than two feet in depth shall be protected by a fence designed to restrict access by children.
Right. Because those covers are hard for adults to get off, let alone kids.
Yeah, that's a good add.
Okay, anybody else?
I would agree with the provision of making the spas and hot tubs having covers accepted from the requirement for a fence. I have a hot tub, and it has almost four-foot sides, but it has a solid cover on it. One, the cover is hard to remove for adults, but two, even then, it would be difficult for a child to climb up and get into it, even if it weren't covered, because of the heights, which approaches four feet. Typically, four feet, I think, is the number, the height of the fence that you're looking at anyway.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Do we have any idea, I mean, at all, how many pools, maybe across Bela Vista, that don't have some type of enclosure? Is it a lot?
I know of one.
I've seen a handful since I've been here, Doug.
Okay.
There's quite a lot of pools, not too many in-ground, but there's quite a few above-ground. I would suggest that probably the above-ground pools probably have a deck associated with them, and then from the deck to the pool is a ladder climbing down into the pool or so you can egress it, and that the deck will have a railing around it. The importance there would be is to have a restricted or lockable gate to keep the kids out from accessing it in the absence of anyone around.
Okay, good thought. Anybody else? Steve?
Yes, I think, again, for me, this is a little bit of a reach for where the city ought to be. I think the part that could be adjusted, I definitely couldn't support it without uncovered spas and hot tubs. Not sure why they'd be in there really at all. And likewise, I don't think above-ground pools require somebody to build a fence around the pool. So if somebody's got an above-ground pool, I'd just remove that. You can't really fall into an above-ground pool without having made some deliberate attempt to fall into, like climbing up a ladder. So I guess perhaps if this is, you know, something that we think is a problem that needs to be solved, I think it ought to be limited to outdoor in-ground pools only, not above-ground.
Linda?
I think you'll find with our sloping ground that there are a lot of above-ground pools that have the deck on the upper side come into that pool at grade. So you don't have to climb up anything to fall into that quote-quote "above-ground pool."
Okay, anybody else before we move on?
So what you're saying, Linda, is that part of the pool is actually in-ground, and that's how they accommodate the deck?
No, the pool is on grade, but the deck, the yard slopes, like this, the pool is here, and the deck comes in at grade level, up here.
The deck starts at grade and goes to the top edge?
At the pool.
Yeah. And so you'd need an enclosure on that deck to restrict access via a lockable gate.
Yes. I can see a picture of one.
Yeah, and I think that's really the objective, is to secure those kinds of settings. The fact that it's above-ground necessarily is not the issue. Normally, the pools are going to be four foot deep or more at grade around the outside, unless they recess them somehow with a pit. I've seen them where they recessed the pit so that, but you have to climb up to get into the pool from the pit. You can't get at it from the edge of the ground next to it. And that deck you're talking about usually has a lockable gate or should have a lockable gate to restrict convenient access by children. Hey? I'm not sure that the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code is the means to use. It is very difficult to interpret, I think, for one. And I don't know if it specifies a fence height or not, and if it doesn't, it certainly is not a beneficial document for us to refer to.
Hey, anybody else before we move on? All right, thank you. Now we'll move into new business. The first is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group of Salome Springs for the purchase of a 2020 Dodge Charger, all-wheel-drive, pursuant to a state procurement contract in amount not to exceed $26,000 for the police department. This is in the budget. Unfortunately, COVID hit before Chief was able to bring it to you earlier. We suspended all capital expenditures in March, and we have since opened it up, and so he has decided to move forward. If you have questions, Chief is sitting right beside me or just behind me, and he would certainly enjoy entertaining any questions. Okay, seeing none. I'll move to the next resolution. Is awarding bid and authorizing the purchase of a hostage negotiation crisis phone from 836 Technologies Corporation in the amount of $27,484 for use by the police department. And Lieutenant Steivel, who heads our CID division, is here as well. Do you want to give us, one of you, an overview, perhaps just go through the stack that you sent out?
Sure. First, I'll cover quickly where the money's coming from, so I'm sure that might be a question that the council may have, and then I'll let Lieutenant Steivel talk on the phone specifically our need for, how we needed it to pass. So if you look at the funding, $27,484, $10,000 of that is going to be coming from the city itself through our capital improvements. It was in the budget for this year, for 2020. The remainder, the $17,844, is going to be coming out of our, it's Asset Forfeiture Fund that's kept at the prosecutor's office that we receive when we do certain asset forfeitures related to drug enforcement. So that money is allotted to the police department to use for drug enforcement-related activities. And so that balance for this purchase will come from the prosecutor's office. I just want to make that clear as far as the money that will come from the city itself. Any questions reference to funding, that portion of it?
Yes, sir, Chief Grace. Kind of what's the intersection between drug enforcement and hostage negotiation?
Sure. Many of our calls, as a matter of fact, the majority of our calls, when we, the hostage negotiation team deploys with our SWAT team, and our SWAT team is used primarily for drug enforcement-related warrant services, and so they'll deploy together. We've already had at least two off top, I think, three incidents in the last year and a half or so, where we've had what we call barricaded subjects who were in the home. They won't talk to us, they won't come out, so the crisis team will have to talk to them and try to talk them out. And that's where this phone would come into play when we had to contact them, and they wouldn't answer a cell phone, or they didn't have a cell phone, they had a landline, et cetera, and they wouldn't talk to us.
Is that fund, that prosecutor drug fund, is that part of the city budget today?
It is not. So we have two asset forfeiture funds. One is through the prosecutor's office, which has to do with felony-related cases, drug cases. So let's say we stop somebody who's transporting drugs, narcotics in a vehicle, we move to seize that vehicle through asset forfeiture laws, it's awarded to us through the courts or cash they had on hand, the vehicle will be sold, and then that money is awarded to the city by a judge, but it's kept eventually at the prosecutor's office at his level, and he keeps track of it there. Nathan Smith will keep track of it through his office, and then we can use that funding for drug enforcement-related activities. Anything we do as a police department that has to do with drug enforcement relation, we can use that fund for. We have an additional fund through misdemeanor charges that we, it's a smaller fund that we keep internally as well.
Thank you for that. That's useful. That's an area I'm not familiar with at all. So we would put in $10,000 out of city funds, this prosecutor's fund would come up with the other 17. What's, why couldn't we have gotten everything from them? Why couldn't we have gotten it all? Is this kind of their way of saying, we want you guys to pitch in as well?
Technically, if we have the money in the account there, we could actually, but, you know, is, this is just, we had put this money in the budget initially to purchase this phone. We weren't fully aware, I wasn't fully aware of the expense of it. And so when we started to do the process of looking into the phone, we needed it would last us a good 20, 25 years. We would do the things we needed to do. It was much more expensive than the money we actually allotted for it. And so instead of coming back to council and asking for more money, I decided to go to that fund and use that fund.
Good, thank you.
And now, any questions reference the phone itself and its capabilities, Lieutenant Byron Steivel will be happy to answer those questions.
I'd love to hear just some of the features of the phone and why, you know, why is it a $27,000 phone?
That's why I brought him.
The running joke is that it's a vending machine for the barricaded person.
It's the latest iPhone. Those may be $27,000.
So the thing is, when we first started this, I said, why don't we just buy a box of phones and chuck one in there? But there's more than it does, so I'll let him explain that. So there are functions of the phone that we'd be happy to show later, and if you want me to discuss all of it, I'd be happy to, but there are some things that we'd like to keep as an operational security to not disclose everything with the phone. But there, most negotiations, they have an average of eight hours of a time period before you can get somebody to successfully come out of a home or wherever they are. So if you think on the back end of the old days, when you plug in a voice recorder and you're having to go back and transcribe eight hours worth of conversation, timestamps... you're having to go back and transcribe eight hours worth of conversation, timestamps, um, of when you call, when they call, what their demands are, it becomes very time-consuming afterwards. And we're talking weeks of just going through all that data and all that information. This device records in, uh, MP3 format, the entire conversation. It timestamps every single time that you call or they call. Also, there is what's called a NOC, which is a Negotiations Operations Center. Comes with a computer, all kinds of things. And, and there, instead of trying to read someone's terrible handwriting on a whiteboard or on a piece of paper, trying to coach the negotiator on things to say, it just pops up kind of like on a, a message that you would receive, a chat message here on Zoom or something where you can read it and help the negotiator see it from there. And it's all recorded. When it's all done, you download everything onto a thumb drive and it's all ready for court for the prosecutor's office to know exactly what happened. They can listen to the entire recording, um, all the demands that were met, all the demands that were there, and it helps for prosecution in the later as well. Um, there are great capabilities as far as the tactical portion of it, uh, which I'm not going to get into everything. Um, but I can tell you that if, uh, if you were involved in a hostage situation, you would want SWAT team, if they had to enter the home in an emergency to save you, you would want them to have fresh information and potentially be able to get to you in the most direct available route. Um, and it has those capabilities as well. Um, trying to think of everything else that might be there. Obviously it comes with the microphones, headsets, this, this, what we also like about it as far as the schools or a business or church. So this phone has, the, the box itself comes with a throne that you can place within the, the business or home or what have you. But if it's not feasible, say there was an active shooter at a school and they barricade themselves in the classroom, you don't want to send a team all the way down there. Um, but instead you can, uh, plug into the landline and actually call to that direct room from the phone that's there in the room. Uh, and it goes through all the other businesses and things like that. So it makes things a lot safer. Um, it helps us be able to make contact, figure out where they are a lot quicker than just having a bunch of different officers and SWAT teams running through the schools trying to figure out what classroom they're in or different things like that.
Byron, uh, multiple viewing locations, security locations?
So, um, so the, uh, well, yeah, so the, not only just the negotiations team, uh, will have access to what's going on, it will go to the commanding center and it will also go to the SWAT team. Um, so for example, if they pick up and talk on the phone, um, there are other capabilities, um, to be able to, to see within there. And, uh, we can patch directly to the command center and to the SWAT team, all of those different things. And so they will be able to pull up on a smartphone, uh, computer, laptop, um, things like that without having to have a bunch of wires going all over the place, um, for them to have capabilities and doing those things as well. Um, right now, Little Rock, Plasky County, Jacksonville Police Department, Arkansas State Police run this system. So we will be a step ahead in most other law enforcement agencies across the state as far as the capabilities that we can do. Uh, we team up with Bentonville Police Department a lot. Uh, we help, uh, the P-Rage Police Department, Graviton, and all those other areas that we will have the capabilities that they will have access to as well for their assistance.
What's, what's great about this phone too, that I want to make, all these programs that I always look for as chief is what is it going to cost us in the future? What's nice about this is, is, is we get annual software updates for free. And usually that's something that we have to budget in for any computer or software-related system we buy, is, is they always hit you every year for, you know, 1,200, $1,500 software update. And this comes with the software updates for the life of the unit. So really this is a one-time expense and it really should last us, uh, for a good 20, 20, 30 years. And what I asked Lieutenant Steivel as well is asking, so okay, so we chuck a $27,000 phone in there and then destroy it with a sledgehammer and now we're out, right? And, and so we're really not, because actually the box we throw into them, it's in a Pelican case, it's pretty tough. Even if they destroy that, that's a small, that's a small portion of the cost of the unit. A lot of the expensive stuff isn't what gets thrown in the actual house. Uh, and, and, and the company said when those get actually destroyed during an incident, much like when an officer gets shot in a bulletproof vest, they, they really helped out in replacing that unit because it was, it was damaging the line of duty. And so it's not that expensive and it won't cost us quite that much. And then very few of them historically that we've seen, uh, when you throw one of these into the home, does the, the person take a lot of time trying to destroy it because they're really, they're just really too hyped up trying to do other things. Okay, so, so I really don't think it's going to cost us anything in the future with, with something like this getting, getting broken.
So the company that we talked with, they, they haven't seen one, they've only seen one get completely destroyed as far as the, the phone itself. Um, and that was the, when they were bringing it back, the, the M-Rap ran over it and that's, that's probably going to destroy it. But other than that, they've had them shot, put in water, they've had, uh, baseball bats, all kinds of things. And we're talking a few hundred dollars in damage instead of, you know, thousands of dollars in damage. So.
Great, thank you. Any other questions at all?
I, I have a couple of questions. One is how many incidents do we have, uh, per year where a hostage situation has been a part of that scenario in Belo Vista? Do we have many?
So we're, we, we're, we're the crisis negotiation unit, so we don't necessarily just handle hostages. And since I've been here, we have not had necessarily one hostage situation. Um, we've had three barricades in about two years and, um, we've had another barricade where an individual was suicidal. And, uh, um-
Explain them real quick what a barricade is.
So a barricade is, say you have somebody, um, and this was in the news, I'll, I'll describe it. So we had, uh, we had a case over off of Spink Ridge, if you, if you remember that in the news. So this gentleman, um, had assaulted and battered the family, uh, when the officer showed up. He locked himself in the house and refused to allow them to get personal information or belongings that they needed to be removed from the home and to go through the judicial process that was determined that he needed to go through at the time and be placed under arrest. And in so doing, we, um, he, we were out there, I think for three or four hours, uh, trying to negotiate with him to come out and, um, um, so that the family can gather their belongings and, and leave the house and, and get into a safe location for when he did get out of jail. And so basically they, they will barricade doors, they will, they will put things in front of them so we can't go in. They will, um, this particular person had, uh, multiple access, access to multiple firearms, different things like that, um, that make it very dangerous for if law enforcement were to just go in and try to do this for just an arrest. So, um, we, we are tasked with the responsibility to get everybody out safely and, uh, without having to use force or harm.
My next, my next comment is on page two. Uh, it looks as though, uh, this will have a hard drive in it and I'm, I'm suggesting that you may want to consider a solid-state hard drive as opposed to the rotating one that's specified. Uh, the reason being there's a trend towards going to solid-state because they have better longevity and, and not so susceptible to damage.
Well, that, that, those are definitely suggestions that we can make to the company. Um, but that may just be part of how they make it. Uh, the, the hard drive though wouldn't be part of, as far as I can tell, I don't think that's going to be part of the, the, the item that's thrown into, into, into the, uh-
It's, it's on the, it's on the computer on page two.
Yes.
It's more in the lower, lower listing of details and it would suggest that you revise that to a solid-state hard drive. It'd give you better longevity.
And that may be, that'd be something we could definitely bring up with them, but if they don't make it like that, I'm not sure if that would be an option, but we can check with them.
It's becoming more and more common on computers.
Sure, yeah.
Good point, Larry. Anybody else?
I, I think it's a good program. It'll help us and perhaps our neighbors too.
I agree. Gentlemen, thank you. We'll move on to the next resolution. Authorizing and letting the millage rate of antelorm real and personal property tax for the city of Belo Vista, Arkansas for the year 2020 to be collected in 2021. You have seen this before about this time every year. I usually get a letter, as I did late last week from the county, and, um, they are looking for a signed resolution. The deadline date is October the 20th. Our meetings for October are after the 20th. And you may even remember, I think we had to have a-
Special meeting.
A special council meeting, uh, last year in order to get this in on time. This is a very important document because if you don't get it in on time, then you won't see your property tax for the upcoming year. And you may remember a couple of years ago, there was one city that forgot to do it and, um, they were a little strapped financially.
Yep.
However, of course the village, uh, the village hasn't changed at all and, uh, you can actually see the resolution as part of your package. Is there any question at all? Okay, we'll move on to the next. Is approving the mayor's appointment of Philip Bowe to position seven on the Belo Vista Board of Zoning Adjustment for a term ending October the first, 2023. Uh, this is a reappointment and Phil has agreed to, uh, step forward and do more time on the board for us. Are there any questions at all? Similarly, the next resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Lee Cronkey to position two on the Belo Vista Board of Zoning Adjustment for a term ending October the first, 23. This also is a reappointment and Lee has agreed to serve again. Are there any questions? The third, oh, sorry, item F is approving the mayor's appointment of Beth Tracy to position three on the Belo Vista Board of Zoning Adjustment for a term ending October the first, 2023. Beth is new to the position and I believe in your packet, there is an enclosed, uh, resume. Any comments or thoughts? Thank you.
Only to say, uh, to all three of these, uh, participants or candidates, uh, for the zoning board, thank you. Thank you for volunteering, being a part of the city process. We, we need good people to step forward and do this kind of thing. So much appreciation, much respect for these people.
Great, thank you.
And the, and the zoning board of, uh, adjustment is a no thank you board anyway because they have all the tough issues, um, to deal with. They're asked to grant waivers of, uh, waivers from the city code, so.
That's very true. Bob Walker has been the chairman for a long time, is doing a fine job for us. Okay, let's move into the discussion items. The first two we've already tackled. The next is Sunset Drive. There has been some activity up there. Doug, would you like to give us an update, please?
Sure. Uh, the construction company has, uh, brought in a lot of gravel and they've waterproofed the back of the building. Um, I was told today that on Wednesday they will be bringing in equipment to begin work on the retaining wall and that it's estimated to take them about three weeks. And then once that's complete, there will be some additional backfill between the wall and the road and I'm hopeful the road repair can begin at that time. Um, so hopefully in a month, we will start to see some progress, um, when the wall's done on the road.
Hallelujah. Any comments at all, anyone?
Mayor, could I, I, did we skip a resolution about the, uh, Dodge Charger for the police department or did I miss that?
No, no, we talked about it earlier.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, uh, let's move to the bridges on, on Lancashire, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, counsel, this is, uh, for the Little Sugar Creek Bridge right here, the closest bridge to City Hall. Uh, RDOT is going to be, uh, doing some work on that bridge and this, uh, this update is, uh, regarding the bicycle lane that will be added to that bridge that the city is wanting. Uh, originally about three years ago, Mayor, the city received a grant from the Walton Family Foundation to pay for this, uh, in the amount of $430,000. And Trailblazers received a grant in the amount of $170,000. So that $600,000 was supposed to pay for that possible, uh, lane across the bridge. And, uh, a lot of time has passed and RDOT recently let us know that that $600,000 figure is no longer good. That has jumped up to $783,000. And so we are in the process of applying to the Walton Family Foundation, uh, for some additional funds in the amount of $183,000, 900, $183,911.13 to make up that difference. Um, I'm working on that grant application now and we are, the Walton's, Walton Family Foundation has told us that the committee will not meet till mid-October, so we're hopeful to have an answer by mid-October. Meanwhile, RDOT is ready to begin that work now. So we, we, we're in a bit of limbo. We're, we're just waiting on, uh, an answer and they're, they're either going to proceed without the bicycle lane or with it. And so we're hopeful that it will include the bicycle lane to help folks get from one side of town to the other safely, um, without getting hit.
I, I guess it would seem to me that if, uh, trails and bicycling and those kinds of activities are important to the city and certainly the 2040 plan suggests that they are, uh, we've invested a great deal of funds, millions of dollars in fact, in, in trails and improvements to bring people to the city. Even if we don't get a commitment for grant monies on this, I think the city needs to step forward and commit monies out of our general fund to, uh, to cover this money, cover this 183,000 so that the project can move forward. I think it's important for us to build those structures with the additional pedestrian capacity on them and, uh, not, I, I think we need to step forward and commit to that. If we're able to get the, uh, monies in the form of a grant from the family, Walton Family Foundation, that's great. If we're not, I think we need to step up and, and, uh, commit, uh, local monies. It would appear from, uh, the reports that I see, uh, that we are ahead of the game in terms of revenue from sales, sales tax this year. And so it may well end up generating sufficient monies to cover that also. So that's, that's my-
Yes, if, if you'll pardon the pun, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But, um, first and foremost, I'd like to, I'd like to approach the Walton Family Foundation because they have, uh, certainly given us strong hints that all will be well. So, um, if they say no, then we're certainly going to have to determine what the next step is and of course we won't do anything until we come to talk to you first.
Just a quick question on the bridges. I, I was, uh, attended a coffee this morning and the, the folks that were there, they were actually talking about these, these two bridges. And they're under the impression that they're going to be like double lane. But they're not, are they? Aren't they still like single lane, just one each way?
I'm not sure.
Because the road's only two, is only two lanes, right?
I'm not sure if it's getting wide into four lane. I know that the bridge over Little Sugar is going to, uh-
The Mercy Way Bridge is?
The Mercy Way Bridge is for sure. That's completely different projects.
Right.
This project that I'm updating you on today is actually this Little Sugar Bridge.
Right.
Right here, closest to City Hall. They're going to straighten the curve a little bit right there so that it's not so dangerous. And then on top of that, RDOT's going to build a tunnel just past that where the soft surface trail comes along the golf course. And then they're also going to upgrade the Tanger Creek Bridge just past the tunnel. So it's kind of a three projects in one, but this grant is to pay for a bike lane on the Little Sugar Bridge.
Right. Yeah, I, I actually went to the public meeting on that, but I couldn't remember whether-
I can't either.
But anyway, I just thought I'd ask.
No, I'm with you, Doug. I can't remember either.
And, and the bridge on Lancashire is a three-lane bridge, right? As it is today. You have going east, you have two lanes there, one to turn right on the 71 and the other to proceed straight ahead. And then you have one lane coming the other way.
True. That's true.
You say turn right? Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. You're going the other way, so going the other way, you're turning left, yeah.
Right. Okay, any other thoughts and we'll keep you up to date as, as we move through this funding.
Is there a way to just quickly describe kind of what the, what the change in, in the, uh, cost of the, uh, uh, project is? Well, what's, what's the explanation for that?
Uh, well, if you talk to RDOT, the main reason they say is COVID. And COVID, um, has become a very convenient crutch in all conversations. Plus it's been almost three years since the initial cost estimate was done by RDOT. So I guess I'm not really all that surprised that the price has gone up. But on this, on what specifically has gone, uh, up, no, they have not, um, shared that with us. They went to bid, they got the bids back in and the price- They went to bid, they got the bids back in and the price came in higher than expected. And COVID was the excuse, but I haven't heard of anything else.
Okay, and then just finally, I think it's really important our language to be accurate on this. What we're, the part we're talking about, that we're seeking funding for is a pedestrian lane.
Yeah, that's right. It's a pedestrian bike lane, that's right.
We need to stop with the bike lane. I think we wear people out with that. This is for pedestrian usage, all pedestrians.
Whether they're riding or walking, that's correct. Anybody? Okay, anybody else? Yes, Linda.
Just to mention, the cost of concrete and the cost of steel has gone crazy.
Yes, it has.
I suspect that's the vast majority of that increase.
Yep, that's true.
Is this the total project cost itself? Or is this just related to that pedestrian cross?
Just, just the pedestrian cross.
What is the total project magnitude?
No idea.
They haven't shared that with me. It's, I'm sure it's going to be huge because it's two bridges and a tunnel.
Okay, moving on. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at the financials on the seven-month financials that Carrie's put together. I would encourage you, if you have any questions, to give her a call. We did get the preliminary figures in for the July sales and use tax. Do you remember it's always two months behind? It's rather astounding. It's 86% higher than it was last month. And now we haven't seen the actual figures yet because of course, the state takes a, a 3% cut on it. If you remember, the AML is trying to get that reduced in the next legislative session. But that, that is a hefty increase and that will certainly increase our surplus to budget, which I believe Carrie said in the last iteration was $313,000. This should put us close to, I think, half a million. And the county was up 7.6% month over month. So they too had a good month. And of course, we will enjoy 11.98% of that after they pay their 3% as well to the state. The budget process is continuing well. We've done a lot of these sit downs with the department heads to go through the first draft. And we have quite a bit more this week and we'll get those wrapped up. The objective is still to bring to you the preliminary budget for viewing in October. We have received what we believe is the final increase in health costs, which we've never had at this early before. It's coming in at 8.22%. It's hitting other cities much harder than that. But we're going to also be talking to the broker in, in the coming days as well to get a better feel for the breakdown. So we will be baking that into the numbers as well. We're also trying to have salary increases for employees at 3% at the department head level so that the department heads and their management teams have flexibility to be able to allocate, you know, pay raises on merit, on performance, anywhere between one and whatever. But as long as that, at their department level, they must come in at 3%. So that's the objective. So stay tuned for more, but I just wanted you to know that we're still hard at it. And for those of you that have been around for quite some time, John in particular, and Jason, you probably remember the great binders that we used to do with papers and eraser and pencils. Yeah, that's right, it was very, very thick. Carrie has refined it even more so that it's a matter of just sitting in her office, looking at a big screen on the wall. And as we make changes, she does it real time so we can actually see the impact on the bottom line, which is terrific. So kudos to her. Okay, the last thing I have, and I know that all of us have been involved in this on and off for months, is the tree burning on lots by building contractors and how to approach it. Staff have had a lot of discussion internally. Doug has a few thoughts and I know that Chief Sims has a few thoughts as well. And so we're just going to share those with you. And if you have any thoughts as well, it'd be great if you'd share them with us. So Chief, would you like to start first?
Yeah, I guess I can. Doug kind of, I think he sent out an email too, kind of on some of the same thoughts I had as far as what, what we could do or what, what might be possible. To kind of give you a little bit of history, for years, you know, people had cleared lots and they burned the material on site. So as of until now, that was probably a good thing to do in, in most cases, most instances. But we're not having that debris moved off somewhere else. But my concern is, is if we don't allow that burning right now on, on certain lots, is there going to take that debris and put it on the cul-de-sac somewhere where we can't see it until later on, until we have an issue with that? But what I've noticed here lately in more of the, more of the call we have received have been contractors burning out lots that are in heavily populated residential areas. Okay, so you have lots of houses around, got a couple empty lots and they're burning that debris. That's the ones that we're seeing the most of. And I believe on the same thing on Doug's side, that's, is that true as well, Doug?
Yeah, we don't get a call when the, it's the only house being built on the street and they're burning. We get a call when it's right next door to someone that's got some health issues and it's a couple of days of smoke.
The latest one was over on Witherby, which I actually went out and looked at myself. Is a contractor and, and of course, the fire department don't know. All we know is they got a good defensive space or they burn within regulations of the city, which is if there's not a burn man on, they're, they're allowed to burn that debris as long as it's fresh and not trash. But what I seen was a, I thought it was two lots that were cleared, but I was told later on it was three lots that they had cleared in a residential area and they had piled all three lots in one area and were burning it. So that sparked a lot of controversy, a lot of people calling in, several people calling in about health issues and so forth. So I think, you know, Doug said the same thing, but I'd like to see that if we have an issue like that, we would go out and inspect it and look at it and see that it's in a residential area, that we allow or we, we give them a cross break or something, give them a different alternative to do instead of burning that debris on site. So, but if it's outside somewhere where there's no houses being affected by it, then it can be allowed to continue to burn. Because it's an issue that we don't, I don't want to see that, that debris being moved to a cul-de-sac somewhere and dumped. We've had that happen before here.
Sure.
Not only brush, but we've had other debris and trash and so forth, shingles and things like that.
Mr. Tapp, any other comments?
This is a complaint that we get. How many complaints do you get a month? We get a couple, we get a couple a month, which is not bad for 50 to 50 permits that we did last month. But the complaints that do come in, they are typically very involved with a family that's got a sick kid that just got out of the hospital or an elderly parent that is having breathing issues. And so in those situations, we're really at a loss for what to do. We did a little research and the two closest sites for a builder to haul these off, one of those doesn't take root balls and stumps and the other one is a hundred mile round trip. And so both charged by the ton. And if you do, if you, if you, in average, Bella Vista lot that's got 20 or 30 trees on it could get on up there in price. And so we're really trying, we're struggling trying to figure out a way to keep homeowners happy and builders happy. Builders want to burn it and homeowners want them to haul it off. And so we're, we're stuck with a, the permit seems to keep going up. We're going to do 50 again this month, probably. And so the populated areas where there's a lot of houses, it's, it can be a concern. And so we're really looking for some feedback and thoughts on some ways that you think we'd make it address this.
You know, one thing that we did in the past for the stump dumps fire, if you remember, there was a certain amount of mileage all around. Was it two miles, feet or was it a mile?
Miles, a mile.
Mile and a half?
Mile and a half.
Mile and a half? If you were going to build in there, we would give the builder an incentive of.
Half price.
Half price on the permit or $500, whichever is the less, the lesser of the two. And that was quite effective. We had heard that the, typically the average lot, the haulage price was somewhere around $1,200. And so once we introduced that, the builders seemed to understand and they moved forward and everything was fine. Of course, once the fire was out, then we rescinded that as a policy. So that is one alternative that you may wish to consider. But clearly, the POA is not in the business of opening it up, opening up another stump dump. Frankly, neither are we. We don't own any land. And even if we did, the proper process costs a great deal of money and it can take upwards of two to three years to get your permit from ADEQ. So not probably something that we, you know, want to pursue. But the incentive to haul off only in a situation where they are right in the middle of a residential area, and of course, that would have to be defined more than just Peter saying that. But it is an alternative that we have been talking about. So I'll kick it off and let anybody who has thoughts, please contribute.
You know, I don't know what they did. Right, right down at the bottom of Howard Street, Colleen Drive, built a home down there. And I know that, that builder, they hauled off everything. They didn't burn anything. And then up at the top of Colleen Drive, if you take a left, I said maybe go down Allison a little bit, take a left, but I noticed I was walking up there the other day and there was a big huge burn pile, you know, on the lot that they had cleared. And there were houses right there. And I, I was really surprised. I never, I never noticed that they were burning, but again, it's up the hill. And I, I was really, i- i- if you didn't get calls from the residents around that area up there, I'd be really surprised because there, there are houses. And, and so I know you're looking for solutions, I don't have any. But I do know the guy at the bottom of the street, he's getting ready to clear another lot just a little bit up the street. I might try to get in touch with him and see, see what he did and see if he'll talk to me.
Okay, that's fair of all, that's great.
I have heard from some builders and contractors, some of them have friends and co, you know, other contractors who own land close by, whether it's up in Missouri or between here and Gravit. You know, if they've got a friend that owns 50 or 100 acres, they're taking that debris and just dumping it in their ravines and paying them a little bit of money instead of hauling it to an official ADEQ regulated landfill. And so I don't know how much of that's happening, but it's happening.
And of course, it's illegal to transport wood over state lines, which complicates it a bit more as well. Steve?
Chief Sims or Doug, do we have any parameters now for, for these builders? If they're going to burn on the lot as to, you know, how long the burn can take? Can, anything like that? They put some kind of expectations on them, but you can't, you can't pile up three lots and then burn it for two days here. We're just not going to permit it.
That's true. Is there a timeline for the burn?
There's no timeline as, as of right now.
What we can, what we've tried to encourage them to do is, the problem you face is when they, when they buy a permit, they want to cut those trees, stack that up and burn it as fast as possible to get to working on the footer, as opposed to stacking it up, letting it sit and rot for two, two months so that it will burn clean. They're burning green wood and so that's what puts off all the smoke. So ideally, they would, you know, stack it up, let it rot and burn it in one day or two days. But they're dragging it to the middle a little here and there. And then the contractor gets called to another job, you know, it burns for a couple of days and he comes back to this lot because he's got five or six going on or 100, like we have one builder going on right now. I mean, it's just all over the board. Sometimes they get it done quick and clean and sometimes they take forever.
I'm just thinking about this for the first time, but somebody was mentioning, or maybe Doug was giving one idea is you give a discount if they're going to haul it away. I, I, I would kind of lean the other way and say that is if you're going to burn on site, there's going to be a burn fee associated with it. Of course, you know, that might discourage the idea. If, if we make it as expensive for them to, to burn it on the site as it would be for them to take it to an appropriate dump, then, then I think we'd get better results out of it. Not, not to favor the people who, you know, yeah. More so, more so, I think that there's an extra fee to burn on the lot. Let them deal with that.
And then, of course, we're already talking about impact fees on top of that.
Right.
And.
That's consistent with that, it's putting the responsibility for impacts onto the builders.
We're just not sure what percentage of builders, when they pay that extra thousand or $2,000 to, to burn or to haul it off, will start taking it to an undeveloped street here in the city and dumping it in a ravine. We don't, we don't want that.
They could find themselves in jail if they do that. And if they want to take that risk, there's ways of, of recognizing those kinds of things. I know people do get away with dumping, but people also get caught dumping. And I think the penalties are pretty ugly.
Given the amount of, of permits we'd have, we'd have to have a lot more people in COVID force than to be able to watch it.
I, I think you could, you could ask for some documentation about how it was disposed of. If they haul it someplace, they should get a receipt or documentation that they, they disposed of it there and put the onus on them for the proof that they disposed it in an appropriate and acceptable manner.
Well, that was a reason to charge as well.
Any possibility of turning it into wood chips?
Did do some research on that. There are some companies that have mulchers on the front of skid steers. And, and I think they could do a lot in a day. They do charge about $1,500 a day to bring that equipment to the lot and mulch set up. And then they could use the mulch as a, a erosion preventative, so it would benefit. But just getting them to pay that fee to have somebody come out would be the challenge. It would be beneficial though, to keep that on site.
So the permit fee, sounds like it should be in the range of 1,500 to 2,000.
I think that's correct, Larry, somewhere in there.
Well, we're not going to solve it tonight, but we just wanted to throw it on the table, let you know that, you know, we're talking about it and thinking about it because I suspect that you're getting the same number of calls that we are. And certainly, we're going to have to find a solution. We have found some, you know, builders that when we approached them with a specific problem, like a child who's just been released from the hospital and having a hard time with respiratory problems, the builder just stepped forward and said, "Fine, I'll take it and haul it away." And so you do find those situations as well. And we'll keep working on it and keep you informed as to the progress. Okay, that's the end of all, all the agenda items.
Just apologize, but you know, there are so many, you know, some of them are maybe more legitimate than others, but companies, people, guys that cut trees for people and they haul, you know, their timber somewhere. You know, they're not burning it on a lot. And I mean, there are a lot of them out here. And I just wonder, maybe we approach a few of those and find out where they're going. Of course, maybe, maybe we don't want to know, but.
Or they don't want us to know.
I don't know, right. I mean, they're everywhere.
I think a lot of them are cutting wood and splitting it and selling it by the rig.
Well, don't some of them haul the logs, the timber logs or some sell?
They will, but most timber companies require three truckloads to come, to consider it profitable to come pick up a load of logs. And these lots in Bella Vista would struggle to get three truck, log and truckloads of wood.
Anyway, interesting conundrum. Anybody have anything else they want to put on the table? All righty, a little longer than normal, but thanks for hanging in with us and we'll see you on Monday. Good night.